I'd like to call to order the City Council's special study session for August the 10th, 2015. If we could have the roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
I did receive email from Councilman Teetz that he would not be here for this study session, so we will handle that absence at the regular council meeting. We have one discussion item this evening for our special study session. It is a discussion on the Great Lakes Water Authority, so I will turn this meeting over to City Manager Brian Kishnick.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and appreciate everyone's willingness to meet in this room and have time during the regular meeting to continue this discussion on the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Troy's water contract. When I think of the three biggest issues facing the City of Troy in 2015, I think, number one, transportation funding solution; number two, library funding; and number three, our water services and the water agreement that we have with Detroit Water and Sewer Board right now, our district, as well as the formation of the Great Lakes Water Authority and how that affects the City of Troy. So, with, and not in that order, but with that, we thought it was appropriate to spend as much time as possible on this very important issue. And so originally, we were going to have Tim Richneck and Tom Darling, who have spearheaded this for the city, and they'll be part of this presentation, but we just got lucky enough to have the most knowledgeable people on this issue around, in Bob Daddow from Brooks-Patterson's office and Sue McCormick from DWSD, as well as the interim CEO of the Great Lakes Water Authority. So, this is a very special night for us to have these two individuals. So, we're going to start off the presentation, though, with some commentary from DPW Director Tim Richneck and Financial Services Director Tom Darling.
Good evening, everybody. The agenda for tonight, as Brian brought up, and to emphasize again, City Council will need to determine an assignment from DWSD to the Great Lakes Water Authority at a future meeting. That's not a decision that we're asking for tonight. The original water contract with the city and DWSD was created back in 1961. It was a 35-year contract, and it had annual extensions until, in 2008, we agreed to a 30-year contract with a 10-year extension at the end. Article 5, the pressure and flow volumes, is part of that contract that we have reopeners for, and those reopeners help us to adjust to the pressures, the flows, the peaks, kind of the things in, within the contract that can change based on, you know, the environment, technology. Continually, we're getting more efficient fixtures in the homes and so forth, and we have to adjust for those types of things. We have six distribution points where the DWSD system meets the City of Troy's. And then, in this contract, under Article 5, those periodic reviews, we had one, the original contract was 2008, we had a review in 2010, and then we had a five-year review in 2013, and we're going to have a review every five years after, within this 30-year contract and within the extensions there might be. So, in 2018, we would be reviewing this contract, again, for the minor technical things within that might change.
Again, in the contract that we're reviewing or looking for assignment, in the current contract, under Article 7, talks about rates. In that article, it dictates that the customer agrees to pay rates established by the DWSD Board and that the DWSD Board rates shall be reasonable in relation to their costs. There is no minimum and there is no maximum in what the DWSD can do with those rates or change them between variable or fixed. In recent years, we've seen more of a fixed component in the rates being established because of the decrease, and I think you will see more of that, in water consumption, not only by the City of Troy, but several municipalities that are in the authority as it stands. Also, in Article 13, it talks about assignments, which, again, is going to be one of the questions posed at a future council date. And under Article 13, it says that consent to an assignment shall not be unreasonably withheld by either party, either DWSD or the City Council, depending on who's looking for the assignment. Okay? So, that kind of wraps up the current contract or leaves assailant points in relation to the current contract that we have with DWSD.
And now, Mayor and Council, we'd like to move on and ask Bob Daddow to come forward, or Sue to come forward, to provide their part of the presentation. But Bob and Sue, just to set this up, we talked about it a little bit with that introduction, the real issue that the city will be voting, that the City Council will be voting on, is the assignment of our current water contract from the DWSD to the Great Lakes Water Authority. And assuming that were to be an affirmative vote by this council, then the participation by the City of Troy and the Great Lakes Water Authority would be effectuated. So, the vote is on, and not tonight, as we've said, but on the assignment of the water contract to the Great Lakes Water Authority. This is just an opportunity to understand everything with Bob and Sue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate you taking the time to try to educate us on what's going on with the water.
I appreciate that. My name's Bob Daddow.
Bob, if you could, we record this, and if you could use the microphone, that'd be really appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Daddow. I'm Deputy County Executive for Oakland County. I work directly for Brooks and am the current Great Lakes Water Authority Chairperson. The Water Authority came into formation in November of 2014. With me, I have Sue McCormick, interim CEO. Sue's been at the DWSD for...
Three and a half.
Three and a half years at the moment, has made great strides in her effort here to do, among other things, cost containment and restructuring, as an example of which I'll give you, is a reduction in employees' positions, if you will, full-time equivalents from 2,100 to about 1340 right now.
1322 as of July 4th.
1322, which, without, you know, without affecting service or water quality, if you will. We have a number of things that we'd like to talk to you about concerning the GLWA, and we each have our sections, I think. I'm going to stay more into the history and the level of the agreement, and I think Sue, being an engineer by heart and training, will get into some of the more detailed effort of the actual inner workings of DWSD, if you will. The contract itself was approved June 12th, 2015. The contract really transfers, essentially, in a quiet lease, the rights to have the GLWA operate, common all assets, which, for the want of a better explanation, are common, common all assets are really the plants and some of the interceptors, as well as, you know, the capital requirements that are going to occur going forward. The lease itself calls for, excludes, if you will, Detroit-only assets. Those assets largely in the distribution network, if you will, the pipes that would be responsibility of Detroit going forward. The GLWA assigns the bonds payable from revenues. We have a special revenue fund, if you will. The revenues collected by the GLWA will ultimately be used to pay debt service and operations and capital needs of the program, as well as a few other items we'll get into. The lease itself is backed by the revenues, revenues collected, not necessarily assets. It's unlike your mortgage, if you will, where the principal backing is your house. The principal backing on revenue bonds is the revenue itself, which gets to the crux of the issue that we have at hand, is that the assignment of the lease needs to move from DWSD to GLWA in order to protect the revenues on behalf of the bondholders, as the debt of DWSD, which is about $5.2 billion in outstanding debt, bonds, if you will, will move from DWSD to GLWA. And obviously, as part of that process, the bondholders need to be assured that the revenues held, coming in in GLWA, are essentially secured in order to pay the debt service on the $5.2 billion in debt. The bondholders must approve that debt transfer, and to that end, tying up the contracts we have with local units through the assignment process is critical to that effort. We have revenue requirements that increases targeted revenues at no greater than 4% per year. The revenues will cover a $50 billion lease payment. One of the issues we had when we discussed this effort back in fall of 2013 is that we had trouble with the lease payment ever going out of the system. In other words, cash being paid to the city's general fund. I don't think Oakland County would have supported anything along those lines, not at the $9 billion they originally had identified over a 40-year timeframe, the $47 million they came down to, or even a nickel. Instead, the dollar amounts that are being paid in the form of lease payments, which are split between the city and the suburbs, as cited there, essentially stays in the system for its needed capital items, in this case, the city's infrastructure. We have a second piece, that's the Water Residential Assistance Program, or RAP, which is about a $4.5 million program that will benefit not only the City of Detroit's bad debt and the low-income folks, but the region's low-income folks as well. So, it would help mitigate some of your bad debt expenses as well for some of the low-income folks or those that might need assistance in paying their bills. The GLWA has a frozen pension obligation, which means, essentially, it was done through bankruptcy. And to that end, we have some activities in the bankruptcy that were somewhat troublesome, including, we read about the $21.4 million worth of an acceleration under the pension plan of, or the plan of adjustment, if you will. And to that end, that became a bit of a sticking point in the discussions, but it was little, we had little choice to deal with that issue. The bankruptcy code, the bankruptcy process essentially fixed that dollar amount. Lease payment, facilities leases will only be used for Detroit's debt service. Essentially, there's two pieces. One, they could actually buy assets, capital program, if you will, deal with the piping. Second issue here is that Mayor Duggan has indicated an interest in possibly bonding for an amount upfront, so that to be able to use a fairly large amount initially, and back that bond with the debt service payments that would flow in at a future date, essentially monetizing the debt service. That's yet to be determined. A lot of discussion has occurred over the past several months, if you will, on the bad debts and the concern of whether or not Detroit will pay its bills. I mean, that is, that was one of the issues that we had to deal with in connection with it. And let me give you eight reasons, eight processes that we put into place or existed, you know, externally, that quite frankly helps ensure that Detroit will pay its bills. First one is the Financial Review Team. Shouldn't have gone without notice that immediately upon the failure to approve their rates, June 30th, the Financial Review Committee Commission, if you will, which is a legislative body that will be around for anywhere from three to 13 years, indicated that there was a potential that by failure of the City Council to pass those rates, they could have added an additional year of Financial Review Commission review. And it's Mayor Duggan's efforts that are statements, that he clearly wants to get out from underneath that as fast as possible. The Financial Review Commission will ultimately be a control over the city. We have court orders that are outstanding from the federal bench, and to that end, that also will provide some semblance of control. We've established a budget stabilization fund, which has a complicated formula associated with it, but to the extent that bad debts go up and their revenues go down in Detroit, arising from the bad debts, the budget stabilization fund, which will be created over a short period of time, targeted at about $22 million right now, would be used to help fund the debt year's shortfall in revenues if it were occurring. We have a split of funds in a long-term budget, two-year budget, if you will, the split of the funds into a DWSDR, the retail operations, if you will, and the GLWA. That split itself brings in transparency. Costs that were essentially treated within DWSD and split only by virtue of a rather lengthy and complicated cost report that needed to divvy up the allocations. The issue here is that by virtue of splitting the DWSDR and the GLWA into two separate funds, the costs will naturally flow into those two separate entities and be far more transparent than it is today. The two-year budgeting will also assist, which is a requirement of the lease. We have a reconciliation committee in the event that there are problems in Detroit not making its payments or falling short or running unfavorable variances. GLWA representative would get together with a city Board of Water Commissioners, not the current makeup of the Board of Water Commissioners today, but a city-only Board of Water Commissioners, would get together and attempt to resolve that issue, failing that arbitration as a possibility. The budget itself requires a five out of six vote. To that end, it will require an inclusion of a lot of due diligence in the process, particularly at the front end. We have a financial reporting mechanism, very complicated, but it's included in the lease payment. And then ultimately, what's been characterized in the newspaper as the nuclear weapon, if you will, or nuclear alternative, is that because Detroit is our agent, we can fire the agent. And to that end, we would be able to replace Detroit's operation with somebody else who does it better or could do it better. Now, I really don't want to run Detroit's operation. That isn't what I want to do. So, that would probably be the last and most draconian approach possible, but it could occur. It's permitted in the lease. To that end, we have, you know, quite a bit of safety nets built into the lease to ensure Detroit's payment. We have, GLWA will be a successor employer, if you will, for the components for things such as contracts and labor agreements. We have articles that have been approved by the incorporating municipality, which is, in our case, the Board of Commissioners, or the county, if you will. And to that end, we have done a number of due diligence things between the November 26 stand-up of the authority and the signing of the lease, which was cited as being a 200-day process, one of which was the independent validation of the financial feasibility of payments. In other words, can the forecasted amounts cover the lease payment and the RAP payment? Plant Moran performed that role. They reviewed that effort and came to the conclusion that it could. We had, in this due diligence period, over 160 people involved in all walks of life, consultants, bond attorneys, engineers, a whole raft of people, targeting a complete looksee in the DWSD operations. The City of Detroit has delegated responsibilities. They are our agent, again. One of the items, and we put this in bold because it's so important, is Detroit is responsible for Detroit's bad debt. The suburbs will not fund the bad debts of the City of Detroit. And that's in court orders, and that is essentially in the service agreement as well that we entered into on June 12th. Likewise, unfortunately, and we do have one community that is troubled, Highland Park, the suburbs are responsible for suburban bad debts. So, to that end, we are underway in negotiations with Highland Park. We can't really talk much about it because it's the subject of a court challenge and a mediation, if you will, but rest assured that it's getting a high degree of attention in the area to resolve that issue. The Authority established a two-year budget, that's by the lease payment, or the lease agreement and the service agreement that accompanies the lease. We have budget disciplines on quarterly financial reporting on Detroit retail performance and a reconciliation committee, as we talked about. To that end, we have formalized the capital development program to a large degree that was codified in the services agreement and lease, basically what DWSD was doing for the last couple of years, anyway, but now it's actually in the lease agreement and the service agreement. Detroit will be the first responder for any leaks or issues or sinkholes in the City of Detroit. One of the things that isn't getting a lot of play, but we did get some benefit from, if you will, even as we had the bankruptcy impact us on the pension acceleration, where we had to pay an additional $21 million over a nine-year period of time to deal with the unfunded liability relating to pensions, there are two things that we got as a significant benefit out of the bankruptcy. The first one is the restructuring of retirees' health care. To that end, the estimated unfunded liability, which was our share of the piece of the general retirement system, was in the order of about $600 million. There was a second piece of debt, which was called the Pension Certificates of Participation, which got a horrendous amount of play in the newspapers. And to that end, both the OPEB, retirees' health care, and the pension certificates were restructured in bankruptcy. In the case of the pension COPS, if you will, certificates of participation, what was a $14 to $15 million annual payment, cash flow out the back door, for our piece of the pension unfunded position, was about $14.5 million, is now somewhere in the order of $1 million, saving $13 million a year. In the case of the retirees' health care, the payments were somewhere in the order of $22 million a year, uncapped, because retirees' health care is uncapped, and to that end, would have grown, if you will. The restructuring of that liability has fixed that amount at $4 million a year for 30 years. And that's an $18 million a year, first-year savings, and however, the health care would have grown over the rest of the 39 years, is a cost avoidance item, if you will, not insignificant, really big dollars in savings that inure to the system, if you will, as a result of the bankruptcy. Additional benefits to the community, increased input, obviously, we've changed the governance structure. Current governance structure right now is a seven-member board, four from the city, one each from the counties, simple majority vote. Do the math. There will be math. Four and three. Literally, they could, and I don't know that they have, but they could impose their will on the suburbs on issues. And to that end, the new governance structure has changed. We are now two members from the City of Detroit, one member each from the counties, and one member from, if you will, the non-tri-county areas appointed by the governor. In other words, some area outside of Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb, in this case, Ann Arbor. And to that end, we have a fair amount of affirmative voting issues with our approaches to that effort. It takes five votes to pass rates, takes five votes to pass a capital program, takes five votes to get debt issued, takes five votes to hire a CEO, takes five votes to do...
Budget.
Budget and set the rates. So, to that end, the ability here to object has been cited in the news, I guess, of Detroit gets two votes and can automatically object. We have four votes, two of which we would need here to stop a vote on any of those individual issues. And if it's a egregious issue, we ought to be able to collect two votes out of four. To that end, we have a significantly higher degree of control and transparency now than we ever have before. And I can tell you that during, and I'll say it publicly, is during the timeframe, the emergency manager was there, and I started in June of 13 on this issue, all the way through the time the mediation started in the spring of 2014, I'll bet you we didn't get a half a dozen financial pieces of information from the city. And I complained vociferously in the newspapers on that issue during the entire process. Once we got into mediation, Sue's staff, Nikki and her rate consultant, Nikki Bateson was the CFO, or is the CFO, the information flowed freely. It was present, it was just not given to us under the emergency manager, which is fairly troubling, given the fact that it's only a billion-dollar-a-year operation. We were to enter into a 40-year contract, no cut. There's no reason to have gotten information for that, is there? But I can tell you that Sue's people were exceedingly helpful, and the information flowed freely, you know, from that point in time, when we had the ability here to get that information directly from DWSD and not through the emergency manager's folks. To that end, I believe conditions, we have a few things that we have to do right now. We didn't quite finish things when we signed the lease. We have something called conditions precedent. We have a whole series of major tasks, legal opinions, we have to enter into an agreement concerning the pension obligation and reporting agreement with the general retirement system of the city. We have certain shared services agreements. There are common backroom functions that exist right now under DWSD that have existed for 100 years, things such as motor pool, things such as technology, computers, things such as the backroom functions for accounting and purchasing and legal and things of that nature, that currently are shared by virtue of having the retail operation of the City of Detroit and the suburban operation of the wholesale operation all in one entity. As we break the entities apart, if you will, there still could be economies of scale by retention of those shared agreements in some one of the two entities that would then build the other entity in this process going forward. On top of it, technology's not easy, movement of that technology is going to be very difficult in that split, and to that end, DWSD is going through a lot of upgrades in their technology right now, and rightfully so. But those agreements need to be drafted and agreed to. We have the assignment of DWSD debt, as we talked about, including the development of a master bond ordinance, the ordinance behind the debt itself, wholesale contract assignment process, which is part of the thing that City Council here is considering, and then, of course, there are a whole bunch of permits that have to be transferred. We have lesser items, such as employment and pension and benefit and other HR-related activities to split the employees into the two groups, if you will, and be fair to the employees. We have the RAP planning, the Low Income Assistance Program, if you will, and a whole series of other lesser issues. Those conditions precedent have to be completed and voted on five... Those conditions precedent have to be completed and voted on by five individuals of the six in order to stand the lease up, which we're targeting right now as a January 1st, 2016 date. So we have about four or five months to clear the conditions precedent, one of which, of course, is the assignment of DWSD's contract to GLWA. And to that end, I ran through the explanation on GLWA at a lightning pace. I think when we talked, Brian, with your staff, we spent a solid two hours, and we were still rushing through at the very end on just GLWA. And to that end, it is a very complicated transaction with a lot of moving parts. I don't know whether, Mr. Mayor, you want to, I'm going to stop mine, and we're going to shift over to Sue here, but if there are questions perhaps on my piece, or do you want to move ahead with Sue and just punch through it?
I think maybe some of the questions might get answered by Sue. So why don't, why don't we just listen to the presentation, and then we'll find time for some questions?
Here's Sue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to have a conversation tonight. It's a privilege to meet with the council here in Troy and the mayor and the city manager. I haven't had that opportunity in my short three years at DWSD, so thank you for the invitation. Now, in 2001, as I was beginning the conversation about coming to Detroit, there were a few things going on. Judge Fikens had transferred the long-term Clean Water Act case to Judge Cox, and Judge Cox had put a process in place to try to solve some of the root causes that were contributing to this return to noncompliance on the Clean Water Act side. And so I walked into an environment with a new board. Five out of six of the board members were new. They had professional qualification requirements for the very first time with both background and number of years of experience. There was true representation of the counties for the first time with those appointments being made by named officials within each of the counties that the mayor was compelled to appoint, and so that was brand-new. And there were some things that required five out of seven votes on rates and capital improvement plans. And that board had just started in April, and I joined in January. So they were really just getting to know the organization, understand the challenge of the organization that they had begun to govern. In November, there were a number of additional changes, and those changes really set the foundation for DWSD to begin to move in the direction of what we've called a unitary department, meaning many areas of independence, legal separation, financial separation, the ability to have our own labor contracts with very unique provisions stricken from many of the labor contracts, things that the court and the cause committee had determined contributed to noncompliance, things like the inability to contract out. That was struck from the contracts. Antiquated work rules. Work rules were struck, and new work rules could be put in place. The variety of things that really set a new foundation for the kinds of changes that really needed to happen at DWSD. Now, I will say this. I was a mayor role appointee. Mayor Bing appointed me before he left office, and so I had the unenviable position of literally being handed to a new board as the mayor's candidate. But I'm here to tell you that I couldn't have had a better board to work with. They were all there with the heart of the region and the benefit to the region in their minds, and they've really worked together very collaboratively. So certainly, the kinds of things that we had were, you know, some challenges and some goals. The challenges were standing up this new unitary department, adding these new capacities to an organization where they didn't exist. There was no HR organization within DWSD. There was a satellite sort of accounting function, but really no independent financial ability to run DWSD as a standalone organization. And as you might imagine, there was a little bit of resistance going on at the city with, when that was going on. But I also had some things that I looked at on the financial planning side. So stand up the new organization, which, as you might guess, might require a few new resources and some new talent. On the other hand, I took a look at what was happening with the rate trajectory, and the five-year financial plan when I started at DWSD showed eight to eight-and-a-half percent annual increases in the budget going forward every year for the foreseeable future. And already, in an environment where certainly within the city unaffordable, but certainly not acceptable in any other service communities as well. So trying to get at that issue of being effective in all these new areas of capability in addition to the normal operations, but being very efficient at it, was my first order of business. And there were some basic tenants that I started with, and, you know, those are really enumerated here, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but really engagement was at the core of that. What I found walking around in DWSD the first 90 days, talking with folks, is that leadership had really been absent. People were there 30, 35 years or more and never met a director. I went out and started engaging in the customer outreach process, which had been established for a decade or more, and while some of the staff at DWSD participated, with many of the technical folks in the customer communities, leadership was absent. Walk in, say hello, have lunch and leave, but really didn't engage in the conversations with customers about the things that DWSD needed to do to help address community concerns throughout the service area. Based on everything that I heard, we embarked on a process that we have called OPT or optimization, where we're really focusing on the way we organize ourselves and the way, around the work that we do, not just an organizational reporting structure, but the work that we do. That's everything from job design to business process improvement and then leveraging technology so that we can get the most efficient we can, take out all the non-value-added work, all the buzzwords you've heard over time that really get at Deming and Lean and some of those kinds of practices. We look to employ those at DWSD. Given the changes in the contract provisions, we've also been able to look at selective sourcing as a way of performing some of the non-core functions that we need to do as an organization, and we've had a number of savings by looking at selective sourcing. I can tell you that the practices were so antiquated at DWSD when we started this three-and-a-half years ago that we stocked pencils and papers and pens and et cetera in our warehouses. Now, what organization still does that? Right? Certainly not Troy. We're focused on energy savings. We're working on capital planning and implementation on a number of fronts in being more effective and efficient. So again, I mentioned that there was this wholesale, this wholesale process already there. One of the very first things that we did is take a look at what were some of the critical decisions that DWSD was going to have to make in the near future, and we wanted to make sure that the customer outreach process wasn't just a way of sharing information with folks. Here's what we're doing, or here's what we've done. But here are the kinds of decisions we have upcoming, and how can we invite our customer communities in to help share that decision-making? That's really, for me, what engagement really is about. It's about shared decision-making with the people that are served by the system. And I think that fits very well as we make this transition from what has in effect been a one-on-one relationship between DWSD and its customers, and was really a transformation from being customers to being owners of the system, in effect. This detachment that I saw in the relationship with customer communities from leadership wasn't just with the suburban communities. Amazingly so, that same sort of detachment existed between DWSD and the retail community. And so much of what we did in the master planning processes and et cetera never engaged the retail community in Detroit. So it was symptomatic of the way that the organization had been managed over time. And as you might guess, fifth floor, that's the leadership. DWSD spent their time on the fifth floor and didn't spend it engaging with staff. And if you're really going to understand what you need to fix in an organization, you've got to have that conversation with the people doing the work. So that connection to people also made the difference. And then the governing body really is a partner in making the kinds of changes that we need to make. So water master planning, that is really, I think, in the services that we provide here in Troy and in the region, this was a dramatic change from what had happened in prior master planning efforts. We went out and formed a steering committee, and we formed it before we put pen to paper on writing the RFP. We invited customer communities in and their representatives in to help us write the RFP, to help us go through the consultant selection process, ultimately to provide oversight of the whole customer process in the entire master planning development, review of minimum reports, and the responsibility beyond that customer steering group to reach out to the larger customer communities, because with 83 contracts, not everybody was on the steering committee, but to tell us, what did we have to take back to the larger group? And give them interim results and get their feedbacks so that at the end of the day, we ended up with a master plan that everybody understood, that we all believed was flexible moving forward, unlike the prior plan that only looked at water sales increasing and building new facilities to meet that demand. And of course, as we know from our experience, that plan became outdated very quickly, and it didn't provide a path for what do you do if water sales decline. The new plan does that because, based on our current knowledge of what's happening, everybody wanted to make sure we had a plan that would remain vibrant.
That's about to be issued, too?
That is, that is due out this month. The final report is due out this month, and I think we have an excellent product, and we have a product of that quality because the customers were engaged in the process. We understand and identified all of the issues for all of the communities currently served, as well as taking a look at our opportunities to market the system beyond the current boundaries. So lots of, lots of good things in that report. There's a slide here that kind of shows the structure. So you can see the retail customer has had a steering committee, as well as the wholesale customers, a leadership team, a steering committee, and of course, the DWSD staff. And so what's the summary of that? Quite remarkably, if you take a look at water sales going down right now, that's a pressure point, right? That is the most significant pressure point on rate adjustments every year. No matter what we do on budget, we can never put another dollar into our budget, but if the sales continue to fall, the unit cost, everybody goes up. How do you get that out? Well, you get it out by the kinds of organizational optimization we're doing, and we've done that. I can show you the results of that. But we have to curb our capital investment in facilities that we don't need to serve us. And that's what the water master plan does, says, we have five water treatment plants, and that's 1,700 million gallons a day. I can tell you this year, till the weather got really dry, we didn't tip 700 million gallons a day. What does that tell you in terms of excess capacity? Even if we look out 20 years and were guardedly optimistic, 1,000 MGD of capacity, 700 excess million gallons of capacity a day, and we're continuing to invest in those capital facilities. This plan gives us a blueprint for how we move forward, to trim our appetite by taking one of those water plants out of service, and from my experience in the electric utility business, derating the others, taking a look at which portions of the treatment train can we take offline. We don't have to replace all the pumps. We don't have to necessarily rebuild all the filters. We can curb our appetite so that what we're investing in and what we continue to renew fits what we need to serve the region. On the other hand, we also have marketing opportunities, and we need to put those two in play. But economy of scale isn't just sell more. Economy of scale is invest less, and that's, in our environment, that's what we have to do. This plan identified nearly $30 million a year and avoided potential cost of capital, right? Here's the NPV figures over the course of the 20 years. Okay, so what have we been doing relative to budget? Let's talk about this first. This is what's been happening, if you look at this slide, this is what's been happening in water sales. Now, you'll see two lines there. One says projected and one says actual. So where did the projections come from? Your staff talked about those, what we call lovely exhibit Bs. That's where each community tells us what they're projecting for their maximum day, their peak hour, and their flow requirements. Those projected numbers are from each adding up the community's projected flows. And what have we been doing for the last 20 years? We've been chasing those projected flows. And just about the time we think we have a better handle on what's happening, they fall again, and we're constantly chasing those. And so we're always behind, right? We're always behind. We budget based on the projected, and the actual is what happened, and that shorts us on revenue. And so all of the efforts, all the efforts that DWSD has been made, and this is, I think this slide tells a really good story, the fiscal year 216 O and M budget is $22 million lower than the fiscal year 12 actual, and only two-and-a-half percent higher than 10 years ago. That's pretty remarkable. That's a pretty good accomplishment. But again, go back to this, and what you see is the benefits of all those efforts have largely offset the revenue losses associated with the volume declines. That's a problem. And the way to get at that is, this is operational savings, but we have to get at those capital savings as well. Here's the DWSD budget versus actual O and M expenses for the last five fiscal years, and you can see, even though the budget has been coming down the last couple of years most significantly as we've been putting optimization into effect, our actual performance has been even better, which I will tell you is, we watch it, right? And if the revenues, again, this year, same type of thing, we have the 15th wettest year on record, we watch what's happening with the revenues, and we do everything we can to manage our expenses. And in large part, that's why, in addition to our optimization efforts, the budget management is really taking a look at making sure that we're offsetting those negative revenues. But what we're not accomplishing is one of the objectives we have, and that is, these savings were intended to help us build into revenue-financed capital so that we can get away from having $5.2 billion worth of debt, which leverages the system. Over half of what we pay in our unit costs is associated with debt and debt service. And if we're really going to try to contain rates, we've got to be able to move into some revenue-financed capital, and our objective is to do that through operating savings. Here are some of the cost savings that we have put in place. This is basically on the wastewater treatment side in fiscal 15, $12 million were the cost savings as compared to 14. Here's what we're doing on the water side. An example, we're looking at both optimizing chemical feeds as well as our unit cost purchases. Here's an example for fluoride. We're adjusting both dosage and cost. And here's a sum of the four major treatment chemicals that we use when we're treating water, about three-quarters of a million dollars in savings from fiscal year, comparing fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 14. So eye on the ball, looking at every opportunity, both in our procurement practices, but also in our operating practices, but not without a cost in terms of compliance or quality. On the wastewater side, we agreed to more stringent requirements for phosphorus discharges, and we are performing at less than half the permit limit on average. And so very good a performance, and of course, this is a very important issue to us when you look at some of the problems that are happening in Lake Erie. So what's the future for GLWA? I think the real commitment here is this ongoing effort that we've begun, and that is to create a collaborative spirit amongst all the communities to do the things that are going to be right and optimal for the region. And, you know, I've said over the course of the last year, as we've been going through this process, we've had largely a one-on-one relationship between DWSD and our customer communities, and many of the solutions that may be out there best benefit for the region may be by looking at regionally-oriented kinds of projects that GLWA can facilitate. And I think that that's, this is the dawn of a new opportunity with a new presence with an organization of this nature, and that's really to manage the system for the benefit of all of the customers. I think there are some that I think are worth repeating. Certainly, the increased input in the governance that you have now with the new authority board is an important opportunity to take advantage of that new governance. Many of the impediments that we may have had, we remained a department of the city, and so there were things that we could or could not do because we were associated as a department of the city. Those restrictions no longer apply. This board, I think, can move faster than we have been able to do previously. Certainly, the improved bond rating will benefit us, not only in any future debt we might have to issue, but in refinancing the debt that is currently there. The improved transparency, Mr. Datto mentioned, the stronger financial controls were mentioned, and I think really the improved opportunity to market the system and realize economy-of-scale benefits. I can tell you that one of my biggest challenges in going out and talking with customer communities to date has been the concern over some of the things we have now addressed. Am I going to be responsible for bad debt in the city? What about their infrastructure? Are they going to be able to address their own infrastructure needs, or are we going to end up paying for it? And I think that the protections that have been put in place here address those concerns, and the quality and the cost controls will give us the ability to market the system. We certainly have the capacity.
Thank you, and thank you for being quick. Somebody must have asked you to be done by 7:00, but somebody told you. But we had allotted for more time on our regular meeting if there was a need. So I'm sure there are some questions, though. So who has the first question from the council?
Mayor Pro Tem Camel.
With Wayne County, Wayne County's under a consent agreement now, not looking real strong, perhaps heading for bankruptcy. What's the, hate to be a downer to you, but what's going to happen if that were to happen? What's that do to this whole situation?
Well, actually, I was on Evan's transition team, and I also wrote Act Four, so I do know a little bit about fiscal distrust in communities. To that end, it should have little or no impact on the GLWA, if you will, because the, both GLWA and the county will exist. They are eternal, essentially. We need water. We need the county's operations. It may change management, but I think that at Wayne County, I think to some extent... It may change management, but I think that at Wayne County, I think to some extent, the role of the legislator branch is going to be reduced substantially. The consent agreement is still being drafted, as I understand it. To that end, I don't know what's in the consent agreement and what the targets are for corrections. But there would be two steps before bankruptcy. One would be the appointment of an emergency manager first. And he or she, as the emergency manager, would have to fail before they would consider the ability to go into Chapter Nine. I can't speak for the governor, but I don't think he has much more stomach here for Chapter Nines after having gone through the pain and suffering with essentially Detroit. To that end, it should have little or no impact on the GLEWA arrangement. The appointment is from, directly from the county executive. And to that end, the county executive, in some form or fashion, would still have that responsibility going forward. And GLEWA's responsibility is largely to the citizens, ratepayers, if you will.
I just want to thank you for taking the time to come here. I've been following, I've attended some of the study sessions that Oakland County set up, even during the process that you were going through. The opportunity to keep fact finding is helpful to all of us. Really appreciate the effort. I don't think people understand unless you've become like habitual follower of these kinds of things, I can appreciate the work that went into it. I guess my question would be, what do you need from us? How do we help this process go forward for you?
Well, the first thing we need is the assignment of the contract. We have secured over 85% of the revenue for the, on the wastewater side and just a little over 70% on the water side. When we're looking at bondholder consent in this process and the transfer of the debt, that's the most important thing to the rating agencies and to the bondholders, is that they have the security for payment of that debt. So the earlier that we can demonstrate that we have achieved that, the better off we are in the process.
Can you talk about some of the outreach programs that you have put into place and would be expected to occur going forward?
There are some things that we have, I think, provide a unique opportunity for customers to engage with us as we move forward. There are a few things that we are adding to the outreach process. One of those is, we are what I would call toe in the water on asset management. One of the things that we want to make sure that we do as we take a strictly retail focus, or wholesale focus rather, on the regional system assets, is to make sure that we all understand all the condition of the assets. And so participating in these new outreach opportunities to work with us on identifying critical assets, on ways that we can do condition assessment, on assisting us in understanding priorities, community priorities for master planning and CIP development, is going to be an important thing. Similar sort of thing that we are embarking on, perhaps that is not as critical for your community, but we will be embarking on a similar sort of a wastewater master planning process. Our wastewater master plan is about 11 years old. It's very outdated. And we want to make sure that we go back into every community in the region and invite their participation, identify their concerns and issues with regards to handling wastewater and wet weather flows, and make sure that we identify the appropriate regional solutions for those issues.
And I know that we would be happy to participate in anything that you could bring to our attention because our job is to make sure we look out for the Troy residents and make sure that we don't increase their water rates any higher than their needs. So I think I can speak for them that they're happy to hear tonight that there's been a reorganization, that you're looking out for dollars and cents, and hopefully you will continue to do that. But one of the things that I hear all the time is this 4% issue that the rates were supposed to only go up 4% per year. And I noticed in the presentation, that 4% is still used. But if you could just clarify that a little bit.
Sure.
Because obviously, it's not 4%.
Well, the formula itself is relatively simple. It's rates, if you will, times units equals revenue. Really simple. A times B equals C. The promise is the revenue, the operating budget or the revenue requirements, that is the increase of the 4%. That was in the MOU, it's in the lease. And to that end, it can only go up 4% over the next 10 years or so in this effort. The problem here is, as Sue has indicated, is that the units, the water has, if you will, dropped. We've lost Flint as a customer. That cost us 3.5% of the volume. That went down. You saw the over projections, if you will, of the communities against what actually was occurring. It's down. The problem here is that as the water units drop, the rates have to increase to achieve the same amount of revenue. A times B equals C. So to the extent that units drop, rates go up. And unfortunately, the media didn't do us any favors, and some folks also in the media, which equated the rate increases with the revenue requirement. They are two different things. Revenue requirement is the product of rates times the units. So to that end, if you read the memorandum of understanding, it tied into revenue requirements being no greater than 4%. And it specifically said rates in the next sentence, by the way. So it wasn't exactly like you had to read a lot. The next sentence is that rates will vary depending upon the units. But they just wanted to ignore that second sentence in that paragraph. There's only two sentences in the paragraph.
And it has caused quite a bit of confusion, I think, with the way it was presented. And one of the other issues that I hear that I think you've answered tonight is, are we going to be responsible for Detroit's debt? And what about Highland Park? I hear that. So those questions have been answered to some degree.
You know, on the Highland Park issue, they owe about $26.2 million as of the end of June. And to that end, there is very active, there's a lawsuit right now between DWSD to perform by Highland Park. There is very active discussions going on. I can tell you that a long-term friend, if you will, has been hired as an assistant to work out this contract, a gentleman by the name of Lou Schimmel. Lou Schimmel was the emergency manager for the city of Pontiac. I worked with Lou back into the late 1980s as I was an audit partner with Ernst &amp; Young. And to that end, one of my clients happened to have been the city of Ecorse under the receivership of none other than Lou Schimmel. So I've had significant involvement with Lou over the last 25, 30 years. And I've reached out to him and he's reached out to me and we've been working on that effort as well as the council of DWSD. And I think that I'm hopeful that we can come to some agreement on that issue within the next, you know, several months. It's a very difficult issue because they are very, they are a low-income demographically city. And to some extent, there's been problems in billing by Highland Park. I think Kathy Square, who was the city administrator who worked in Pontiac also, underneath Lou, roles are a little reversed now. But the issue here is that I think that they've hired Wade Trim. They're putting in processes to actually do the billing. And they got a grant from the city of, or from the state here to put in cities meters in residential homes. So I think the, you know, it's on the uptick right now. And I think we've agreed in many instances on the term sheet going forward. That's probably more than I probably should have said in an open forum, but...
If I could add one more piece to that. When DWSD went through its revenue projections this year, because we had been unsuccessful in collecting from Highland Park in the prior two years for the water service provided going into the rate development season, we assumed no collection from Highland Park. Otherwise, we'd have been leaving a hole in the budget going in. So at this point, any benefit that we receive from Highland Park will relieve any need for future rate adjustments.
Any other questions for the council?
Just as a follow-up to the mayor's question. So once you said all that, it still comes down to Highland Park, the suburbs are going to end up paying for Highland Park. That's what it sounds like. Whether it's 23 million, 12 million, the suburbs are going to pay for that debt.
If the debt was not collected. But to some extent, it's already been incorporated in your rates through bad debt.
DWSD did receive a judgment and has letted the judgment on the Highland Park tax rules. That's under appeal. And so that certainly will delay collections, but ultimately, we would expect that judgment to stand. So it's a matter of how we negotiate that moving forward.
That judgment was 241 mils.
Councilman Pennington.
At what point do the bondholders sign off on this agreement?
Well, they have to sign off prior to January 1st. It's a condition precedent. And we are meeting with bond rating agencies.
Somewhat between now and December 31st?
Correct. Now, we are meeting with bond rating agencies now. We've met with two of the three bond rating agencies. We've asked them to take a look at the lease provisions. We've asked them for a ratings confirmation. That's one of the conditions precedent is that GLEWA get at least a as favorable a rating on our bonds as DWSD had. We believe that it's appropriate for an upgrade at this point, given what the known path is. So we are hopeful that we will get that. We would like to have that ahead of going to the bondholders and asking for them to consent to the change of obligor on the bonds. And so we really want to be going through that process over the course of the next 30 to 45 days. So we don't want to let that languish until the end of the year. So, which is why we have been making such an effort to try to get these assignments done here within the first two months or so.
When would you like a vote from Troy?
Yesterday. Bob may be a little more lenient than me, but...
Any other tonight?
Councilman Henderson.
In the event that this comes to Troy and we vote on it and it doesn't pass, what would be the ramification in that scenario?
Well, right now, you have a contract with the city of Detroit for an extended period of time. I think through 2018, you would continue with that contract. You'd be reporting to Detroit.
But GLEWA would still be in place for other communities or...
That's right.
So Great Lakes has its governance and its rate-setting protocols. City of Detroit would have its governance and its rate-setting protocols through the Board of Water Commissioners. In either way, your contract is either subject to GLWA and the budget and rate-setting protocols or DWSD and their budget and rate-setting protocols. And the next opener, I believe, is in 2018, but your contract goes well beyond that.
Any other questions? I certainly appreciate you coming here tonight. And just as, in closing, Mr. Datto, I appreciate what you've done on behalf of the city of Troy because we weren't allowed to be part of this. And you were our representative in this whole process. I've talked to Brooks Patterson a couple of times about this, but of course, he couldn't say much. But I certainly appreciate everything you did looking out for our best interests in this whole scenario that came out. I didn't think at some time this was ever going to happen. And I firmly believe that Mr. Patterson would have never signed off on this if it wasn't the best thing to do. So thank you so much for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, any questions, comments from staff?
I have a few questions I'll wait till after to discuss, but I just want to follow up on what you just said, Mayor. Every time I called Bob Datto over the last year and a half on this issue, forget about before that, the DDA issue, that he was very helpful in helping us bring a plan to you that was successful. But after the DDA, in terms of the water, he always returned my call very, very quickly. I was always surprised to see Bob Datto coming in right away and took as much time as I needed, which obviously, I would have needed a lot more time to comprehend what he was saying. And he took that time. And I just, I can't say enough about his work, A, on this issue, and his attention to the people that are working in it or don't have the knowledge that he does.
I think the intent of this council is to have a resolution, maybe not at the next meeting, but maybe the meeting after that.
If there are any questions in the interim period, you know, our material is, our numbers are on the slide. Brian knows where to get ahold of me and Sue and...
Everybody knows where I live.
We'd be more than happy if things...
We know how that goes.
Questions came up, we'd answer them as best we can. We are still subject a bit to mediation on the conditions precedent, which makes it a little hard on the Highland Park thing, but...
Appreciate it. Thank you again for coming tonight. Very appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will adjourn the special study session. Thank you for coming. See you at 7:30.